It's now time for our meeting to be called to order. The invocation will be given by myself, after which the pledge of allegiance will be given by Ann Hansen.
Heavenly Father, as we come before the, at the beginning of this county commission meeting, I want to take a moment and express our gratitude and thankfulness for the blessings that we enjoy, for the opportunity that we have to live where we do and to have the associations that we have with the people in the county and other places that work so hard for the benefit of the citizens here, and pray that we can keep that in our minds and work towards those ends. We pray for the families who've lost their loved ones this past week, that that will bear them up and give them strength, and we're grateful and continue to express our gratitude to those who have stood up to support and help and encourage them and be able to help them have funds to get their feet on the ground as they adjust to their vies. And we recognize they're going to need thy blessing, and pray for that in their behalf. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in a land of freedom, for those who protect us and provide these opportunities for us, and we're grateful for them, and pray that we can always show that gratitude. We ask, we're grateful unto thee also this day for the moisture that we receive. It's been a long, dry summer, and we're grateful for the good that it will do and for the refreshing it does to our environment, and we're thankful unto thee for that. We ask for thy Spirit to be with us in attendance this day, that what we do will be according to thy mind and will. And we thank you again for all your blessings, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Lord, I worship the holy and just Jesus.
I worship the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Administrative review, reports, future agenda items, commissioners?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, item number four, any former agenda items?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management issues, Mark?
You guys dealing with water on their construction site down there is the only thing I've seen water coming off the storm, so.
Well, it's the first time all summer, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Shirlene, ARPA, LATCF?
We've just spent a little bit the last meeting, but no other activity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are at item number seven, and we'll turn that time over to Commissioner Perry.
All right, as you're all aware, we've had an incident in our county going on for quite a while. We had a cybersecurity incident, and from the time that that occurred on a Sunday night until even to today and even going past today, our IT team is a three-member team, and there's just, there's just the three of them, and they did get a lot of support and help from a lot of outside folks, but I can tell you, our three IT employees have given yeoman's work for the county. They have done nothing but bust their butts for the last three weeks, trying to get us back up and running, and I know it's been frustrating to a lot of our employees, I know it's been frustrating to our public, but I can't tell you anybody I've ever seen work as hard as those three have worked. And so, as we talked to the commission, we felt like it was appropriate that we recognize those three employees for what they've done and continue to do. I actually had to call Keith on the phone this morning and tell him that he needs to give all of his guys a five or 10-minute break to come here today, because they're busily working to try and restore our systems and get things going the way they should be, and we just can't say enough positive about our IT folks. We're grateful we have them and grateful for all that they are doing to restore the technology in our county and make it safer going forward, and to try and make sure that nothing like this hopefully ever happens again in Box Elder County to us, and share their information with others, so it hopefully doesn't happen to others as well. And we just, like I said, again, want to thank them and invite Keith Keller, Nate Hammer, and Aaron Hanks to come forward and be recognized as our Box Elder County Employees of the Month for the month of August. They look tired, don't they? You've got to smile. I'm just telling you, they're looking pretty tired and worn out, but we just can't say enough good about what these guys are doing. We just hope that after this is all done and said, that nobody steals them away from us, because they're all, we're not great these guys are, so, anyway.
We negotiate the dark web, right?
There you go. Thanks, you guys. Either way, we'll take care of you, so.
So, well, folks, we found out that in order to be Employee of the Month, you've got to work 20 hours a week for six months.
No, it's 20 hours a day.
20 hours a day.
20 hours a day for six weeks, every day for two weeks, and then finally, we give you a Sunday off somewhere in there, but yes, they have worked yeoman's work, so.
Done a great job. Okay, item number eight, auditor's office, property tax abatement, Shirlene?
Okay, Shannon applied for a low-income abatement, and I'm going to have her explain she had some extra Social Security paid out that put her over the limit for our abatement program. So, we're coming to you for just the 50% off property tax that is county-funded, but I'll let her explain what made her go over.
State your name.
State your name.
Yes, sir, my name is Shannon Amundson.
Okay, you got to get that right by your lips, so we can hear you. You've got to, really close.
Shannon Amundson.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, I apologize. I became disabled, and three years after becoming disabled, Social Security just said, oh, okay, you're approved. And then my retirement people, the OPM, sent me a bill for $30,000, and it put me over the limit, but I didn't get any of the money, and I still have a very large bill, and I'm embarrassed if I don't. I wasn't, I don't understand how this works, and I'm trying very hard, even on disability, to make sure my stuff was paid and to be a good citizen, and thank you for listening to me. I don't know how to articulate, so I apologize.
That's okay, Shirlene can help you.
So, what I'm seeing in reviewing her paperwork is that she got, like, all the back Social Security hit this past year, and then she got a bill from retirement because she was getting paid based on not getting Social Security, I believe, so then they're taking some amounts out to pay that back from her. Anyway, overall, she was over about $24,000 because of all this, and it's based on 2024 income, and so we're requesting for her that she could maybe get the 50% of the county would allow a 50% break on the tax bill.
How much are we talking?
It's a good question. I don't have her tax account right in front of me. I don't know if we do. Do you know what your bill typically is?
It was $1,247, and this year they said proposal for $14,000 and something.
1,400. So, you'd be probably forgiving around 700 for disability.
Based upon what we've heard and the extenuating circumstance, I'd make a motion that we approve the 50% reduction.
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve a 50% reduction in Shannon Amundson's property tax. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have, I believe, Luana's daughter here.
In this circumstance, Luana's in her 90s, right?
She's 89.
89, close to 90, and she wanted to be able to stay in her home, so she took out some extra retirement to get a lift put in her home. Which she now is over by about $7,000 for income to get the full abatement, so we're also trying for a 50% reduction with this. Do you want to share?
Okay, my, okay. I am Corinne Johnston Tucker. My mom is Luana Johnston. She was with me today. We made it to Second East. I had to turn around because she was having an accident, and I took her back home, but she's so stressed over this, that she's not sleeping, and I told her we're just going to fight, so she's been low-income for quite a while. I think she's paid anywhere from, I'm thinking up to 300, maybe? I can't remember what it was. Okay, yeah, because she fills out the form and she always qualifies. So, this year is $2,200, and this lift cost like 14 grand, and it's the best savings we've ever done, because it can help her so she can still get out and go live the life that she could possibly live. We can get her doctor's appointments and everything, but we went to an accountant, she has an accountant, and she does have an annuity, and we pulled this money out to help her with her medical. During COVID, we had to pay $28,000 to have her in a care facility from that, and it saved our life, but to be able to pull out money to put a lift in, it's not right that she has to pay this much money for her taxes on her house. It threw her over, we had to pull out so much money that it threw her over to $49,000, so she's like $6,000, $7,000. She paid in taxes last year to the government, and we had to, we got told that we should have divided that up, and we should have just pulled the money out for the lift, pulled the money out to pay all of her prescriptions off that she'd been putting on a credit card, and we didn't get that advice from the accountant. It just frustrates me, because we could have pulled the $6,000, $7,000 out this year, and she would qualify for what she's been paying in the past, and now she has to pay half, so we will be pulling $1,100 out of her annuity again, and if something happens to her and I have to put her in another care facility and pay that money? I mean, Medicare only pays a month, you know, when you have your parent in a care facility that charges outrageous prices. It's just hard to see that, that money dwindle, and I'm doing the best I can to keep her in her house, so that she can live and be happy, and I'm just taking care of my mother. So, I just don't, I don't even think she should have to pay the 1,100. I think she should be honored to what she's normally paid in the past, and that's how I feel about it. So, I will be gracious to your 50%, but this was wrong, because our accountant messed up, so I'm sorry, you guys. I'm really sorry that I'm crying, I'm sorry for all of this, but she's, she's been a faithful taxpayer all of her life, and she just wants to be honest, and I had to leave her at home today to clean herself up, to be here, to fight for her, because I'm all she's got. So, yes, I'm mad.
Shirlene, what would be the cost on that?
So, apparently, they would owe 2,200, because you have your valuation with you. So, it would be 1,100 to the county if we did the half. Normally, she would qualify for some reimbursement through the state program as well, but because of being over, she would not, so.
Well, I sympathize with you, I understand that, I know it's hard, and I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the tax abatement on parcel 03-8, or 083-0063, and did you say it was $1,100?
That's an approximate.
Okay, for the 1,100, or approximately that.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the 50% reduction for Luana G. Johnston. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll take care of that for you.
Okay, Tammy and Janessa?
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Tammy Berry. I'm here as the Miss Wilderness Circuit Rodeo Queen and Pageant Director. I brought our current Miss Wilderness Circuit with me, so I will give her an opportunity to introduce herself.
Good morning, it's good to be with you. I'm Janessa Sullivan, and I am just one county south, and we were county from Ogden.
As a nonprofit organization, all proceeds received through sponsorships, fundraisers, grants, et cetera, go directly back into our Miss Wilderness Circuit Pageant. The circuit takes in the states of Utah, Idaho, and Nevada, and we have worked really hard to try to make this rodeo queen pageant worthy of the contestants' time and their talents. However, every single penny counts. Over the years, we have paid the costs of the fairgrounds, and this has been over nine years that I have been the director, but last year and this, our fundraising has been more difficult and costs have gone up, and so we find that we're short in our budget, so we have about $400 to pay toward the fairgrounds, and so this leaves us short for a couple hours for the museum building and for the setup day for the Home Arts Building and four hours of the large arena rent, so we're asking for a partial waiver for the fees. As the Miss Wilderness Circuit Committee, we strive to do our part. Each and every year, we have spent hours hand wiping and cleaning the 120 chairs and tables. Last year, we ended up power washing them, and we intend to do the same thing this year, so we try to make things look good, we try to do our part, we try to leave things as good or better than we found them, and basically, the waiver would be about $800 in value. So, I thank you for your consideration. I'll turn some time over to Janessa to talk a little bit about her reign as Miss Wilderness Circuit. I know you saw her out to our rodeo every night, and if you, then if you have any questions for either of us, we're, we're happy to answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. I feel very blessed to be able to work with her and her daughter, Lacy, this year, as I've been the 2025 Miss Wilderness Circuit. It's been a dream come true to hold this title and represent Utah, Idaho, and Nevada, but for the last four years, I've competed for this title at the Box Elder County Fairgrounds, and what a beautiful place to call our home of our pageant, and we're just very grateful to utilize the facilities that we have grown so, grown so fondly of, especially in my heart, it's where one of my biggest dreams came true. So, my year as Miss Wilderness Circuit, I started at going to Oregon at the Columbia Rubber Circuit Finals, as I represent the Wilderness Circuit Finals held in Heber City, Utah, and have traveled across the country. Miles driven is approximately 20,000 to 30,000 miles, including the countless flights I've been able to take across the country, so I am looking forward to finishing out my reign and really hope that you guys consider the next Miss Wilderness Circuit Pageant to continue to be held at the Box Elder County Fairgrounds.
Any questions or discussions, commissioners?
No, again, one of these things, because I appreciate that it's a partial fee waiver, and like we talked, I think the fact that you're providing a service, you're not just expecting a partial fee waiver, just show up and enjoy it, and then expect our employees to do something, you're actually doing something to benefit our employees and our fairgrounds by doing a service project there, and that, that helps us want to make sure that we can, can support something like this. So, with that, I would support the partial fee waiver for the fairgrounds for the Miss Wilderness Circuit Pageant.
I'd second that, and I'd like to thank you guys, too, for all that you do, clean up, and I think this is absolutely an important thing, and I'm behind it as well, so I'd second that's motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry to approve a partial fee waiver of approximately $800, and a second by Commissioner Vincent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. A little extra on that.
Next on the agenda, Sean Milne, support for the rural county grant 25-71 application.
Good morning, Commissioners, I am Sean Milne. I work for the Bear River Association of Governments, but I work for you as your Economic Development Director. You'll likely recall, but for the benefit of the audience behind me, that every year, we as a county have the opportunity to apply for rural county grant or RCG money through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, or GOEO. State Legislature, a number of years ago, provided this opportunity to counties of the third through the sixth class, AKA rural counties, of which Box Elder is one of those, one of the more populous ones of those, and so it allows us an opportunity to make a case for economic development activities for a grant up to $200,000. There's a sister grant called the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant, RCOG, that is competitive and up to $600,000. I'm not prepared today to just, to speak about that, though, that deadline is coming up next month, and can do so after the CEO Board, the County Economic Opportunity, or CEO Advisory Board, has had an opportunity to vet some recommendations. I suspect I'll be back next month to ask for that. Today, I am, I am here to review what we've done with last year's money. You know that, as I noted, I'm your Economic Development Director, employed directly with BRAG. The services that we offer are in that left-hand column, as you see on the screen, that are helping our existing businesses to grow. You gentlemen are aware that Procter &amp; Gamble is in one of those growth modes right now, and a part of the discussion that I want to give a shout out to Steve and Annie for helping with as we get there, as well as Shirlene and others that helped us get to that point, and to attract new businesses where it makes sense and does not cannibalize our existing businesses. Gentlemen, you probably saw me walk in today with a couple of guests. These gentlemen are from Texas, they represent a site selection, location company, they help those, those large companies, medium-sized businesses winnow down a list of where they might expand to. I've been hosting them the last couple of days, and we just came from Storm Products, which coincidentally, I found out, both of them are quite fond of bowling. I had no idea when Monica and I with the chamber set that up. Logan, the younger here towards the aisle, took it in college, and Eric, the senior, he's friends with one of the pros that Storm has on their payroll that helps to promote their products, so it was just serendipity, and what a great opportunity to show, you know, how Brigham and Box Elder are to work with businesses, so it's been really good to show off our county and communities. So, that's, that's kind of the retain and recruit side. I am, again, this is, this slide is just to tell you what I've done with fiscal year 25 money. We've developed a small business grant and infrastructure grant that is also intended mostly for small and medium-sized businesses to help with infrastructure. The middle one is mostly for capital. The state does not want this money to go towards, since it is one time when they considered an annualized approval from the state legislature, they don't want to see that one-time money go towards labor, meaning what if the state legislature next session doesn't approve it? They don't want that to be, well, that's how you afforded your employees, they don't fund it, and then, you know, they see unemployment go up. So, they want it to go towards capital. That's what the 75,000 would be for. 56 is specifically towards utility costs, when it might prevent, say, a Main Street tenancy, a Main Street landlord situation, where a new business might become an occupant or a tenant. They may have some upgrades that need to be done in order to make that property viable, and we have a number of our small Main Streets that are a little bit older and aged, so we've, we've got that grant program that you guys authorized last year to help with these. So, this next year, you'll see that the first three from left to the right are pretty much the same. BRAG is not suggesting or asking for an increase, this is the same dollar amount it's been for the last three years, this would be for the fourth. We all know what inflation has done, we've tried to absorb that in other ways. We actually had a pretty good discussion about that, and Commissioner Tyler Vincent is one of our CEO Board members, so I, if there's questions, feel free, he and I can address the kind of conversation that went around that. Ditto for the small business grants and the infrastructure grants. We feel like, because it's the first year, and those kind of costs can be fairly large, the group felt unanimously to see what we can accomplish with the second year and kind of get some good data points as a benchmark to measure whether or not those are successful, but you'll see that infrastructure grant went down from 56 to 50 in order to make way for a fourth column that you see here, the Chamber of Commerce, Box Elder Chamber of Commerce. Monica and her team got a grant from a National Chamber Association two, three years ago, and it helped to pay for the development of an economic dashboard that the Box Elder Chamber hosts on their website. That grant ends right now, and they're hoping to keep that service up. They say that it's been very valuable to a number of businesses. It's valuable to folks like myself, Eric, and Logan behind me, because it sends out some spider, which is a technical term in IT, to go out there and search the web to find out a bunch of data points, and then aggregate that data in a very easy-to-read format, and businesses would, you know, they want to know our unemployment rate, our median income levels, our average property valuations, et cetera, as we make the case for why we're a great place for businesses to succeed and expand. So, they're asking for the replacement of that lost grant funding from that national organization through this grant, and Monica, as a member of our CEO Board, did recuse herself during the vote of this particular item, but the rest of the board members were unanimous, and this is your fiscal year 26 board recommendations from the CEO Board. I seek your approval or questions that I'm happy to answer.
I have no questions.
I would just state that if there's a grant agreement from the state, we haven't reviewed it yet, so you'd probably have to approve it subject to our review.
Thank you, Annie, and Tammy did ask a really good question about that in emails, we went back and forth, and asked if I had an agreement to bring. The way that GOEO typically operates with any of these GOEO grants that they offer is you'll give me this approval, I'll write the grant through their online portal, submit it, they'll tell me in about 30, 45 days whether they approve it, and then when they do, Michael, whose last name now escapes me from GOEO, is their in-house attorney, will send me an agreement that Annie has just referred to, so it's kind of ex post facto, and then comes forward for record-keeping here.
So, what you're saying is you want authorization to go ahead and get that process started today?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Annie, where I sit on this board, should I recuse myself?
Um, you can.
Okay.
Just to keep it clean, if you want to.
That'd be great.
I'd make a motion that we support the application for the rural county grant 25-71.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Bingham to support the rural county grant 25-71, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before these gentlemen head to the airport, we're going to go out by Nucor and P&amp;G. Thanks.
I was going to say you're going to go bowling or something.
I think they're going to do that later with, with a Storm branded bowling.
There you go.
There you go. Just know, there's two things in Box Elder County, out there where the Golden Spike is and Storm Bowling, that are only in the, those are only two places that are in Box Elder County in the United States. You can't buy a bowling, you can't have a bowling ball manufactured anywhere else in the United States, except for in Box Elder- the United States except for in Box Elder County and Brigham City.
They were pretty good just deciding when we were sitting in the guy's office. I go, do you know Paul Fleming is a pretty good bowler? He was on the shoot behind you, TP.
He went to the college with Paul.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Item number C, Chrissy.
Chrissy Bennett, Commissioners' Administrative Assistant, Box Elder. This is your, it's the contract with the state of Utah. It is about Predator Management Control. We've done it for as long as I've worked here. It's pretty state-forward, it's pretty standard. Probably done it for, I've been here seven, eight years, so.
I'd make the motion that we accept the Predator Control Contract 2569.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve 2026 Predator Control Contract 2569. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, item D comes under Marta.
This agreement is with the state of Utah, also the agriculture, ag protect, what's his name? He's a inspector, ag inspector and stuff. We used to rent some space to them or lease some space to them each year for their ag inspector to be here in the courthouse, but they are now working out of the Logan office. And so this is just a release of the current contract as they're ending using our facilities, so. That, the room is actually down in my office, if you know, like our little room that we count and stuff. There's a little office right there, so.
I'll make a motion that we release the agreement for the ag inspector office, number 25-70, as presented.
Second it.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve agreement 25-70 and release for the ag inspector's office space and clerk's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Perry, it looks like you have the next issue.
We actually have Jordan Mathis from the Bear River Health Department to talk to us about a letter of support for the Bear River Health Department for capitation from, from Medicaid, so.
Yes, thanks Commissioners for letting me be here. We have this letter, hopefully you've been able to, to look at it. Essentially, it summarizes, we're the only area in the Utah, in Utah that hasn't capitated for substance abuse treatment in our region. And what that means is, capitation means that Medicaid pays you per head, number of individuals that are eligible for Medicaid and are anticipated to use substance abuse treatment dollars. So they have a way of figuring that out across Medicaid-eligible individuals. We're the only area that hasn't done that, we're a fee-for-service area. The interesting thing is, is we have capitated for mental health treatment, but we haven't capitated for substance abuse. So this is the next logical step as we continue to explore ways to better integrate our substance abuse and our mental health treatment in our area. In order for us to even go down this road to explore it, Medicaid is requesting that we have a letter signed by the authorities, that being the legislative bodies of each of the counties saying that we would like to go down this road. So that's essentially what this letter is. It's in a request to Medicaid saying, we're okay with us moving down this pathway. It doesn't mean that we have to go and 100% go down it, but we can't even start exploring it with Medicaid.
So basically, we're just looking at, it's what you're talking about.
Yep.
So. So ultimately, what would be the cost to the county if this goes forward?
There, there would be no cost. There, there's a potential that the cost for the match could go down, because right now, the counties are responsible for the match dollars of everything that's billed towards Medicaid for substance abuse treatment. And where we're a fee-for-service, any eligible provider can do that. If you go under capitation, it becomes more of a, of a managed care model is what they, what you would call it, where you'd, there'd be some oversight to say, yeah, in order for somebody to go into, let's say, residential treatment, which is the most expensive treatment, is it really medically necessary? Or is there a, a cheaper, less intensive treatment that could still get that person towards recovery? And so that could actually bring down the match requirement that the counties are required to pay to Medicaid. So there, there's a potential advantage to it. We believe, it, it's been a benefit to every area in, in the state of Utah, as I've talked to directors, it's been a benefit and actually allowed them to better manage that match requirement by the counties to either keep it stagnant or keep it within some level of growth that's manageable for the counties to handle.
Any more questions, Commissioners?
No. How did Cache County go last night?
They signed it, and so I have it. If, if the vote is to sign it, then it would go on to Rich.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the letter of support for the Bear River Health Department for capitation from Medicaid.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent of the letter of support for the Bear River Health Department for capitation for Medicaid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you. We'll get it signed shortly.
Yes. I'll get it signed, then they can make a copy, and then I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott Lyons, you're next on the agenda.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. Community Development Department, today we just have one item, ordinance number 631. This is an ordinance that came from a request for a zoning map amendment application. So this request came in, the area is 573.48 acres. It's located out in the Thatcher area. All of that, it, area is currently unzoned, and the property owner is requesting that it be zoned to the agricultural heritage zone. This went to the Planning Commission at their August meeting on August 14th. Public hearing was held, and the Planning Commission recommends, forwarded a recommendation of approval on this zoning map amendment.
So how many acres did you say again?
573.48. And this same applicant also has an agricultural protectionary application. Going through the process, the Planning Commission also reviewed that and recommended approval on it, subject to this being approved. So that would come to you at your next meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance, number 631, amending the zoning map for the agricultural heritage zone as presented by Scott.
I'll second it. Do we have a question now?
Yeah, we have a question.
I just, was it 100% approval from the Planning Commission or was it, I mean, just so I know, I've, I've heard some things, I don't know if this is the one or not, but there was some concern that there was some issues with this particular heritage zone.
No.
That it was a complete, a complete approval?
Yeah. And I talked to Scott, that's, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay. Now, where was I?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve ordinance 631, amending the zoning map for an agricultural heritage zone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Fire Department.
There, he's at training, so we need to move that to our next meeting.
Okay. We can move that to our next meeting. Can you do that for us, Marta?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. If I forget, I'm sure I'll forget, so.
I don't believe it.
Okay. So Annie, did you have any need for a closed session or? Okay. Okay, that concludes our agenda. We are now to the public comment portion of the meeting. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the County Commission Rules and Procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the County Commission only. This is the time to be heard. There will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with Commissioners. Speakers may file copies of the remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the County Commission. Okay, we have two people who would like to be involved today. The first one would be Deanna Hardy.
Okay, Deanna Hardy Brigham. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty attended the Box Elder School District Public Hearing for the recent income tax increase. We observed that both the old and the new flags were present in the school board meeting room. The new flag was slightly higher than the historical flag. All you could see on the historical flag was the dark blue. No state emblems could be viewed, which was very disappointing. We continue to petition the historical flag to be restored in both inside and outside of the Box Elder County building, so, so that all may remember our state history. And I want to thank you for bringing it back out. It is kind of disappointing that you have the communist flag higher than our state historical flag, and we'd like you to tweak it just a bit so the emblems show. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty handed each Commissioner and county attorney a copy of the Municipal Service Fund, page eight, which discloses what the municipal tax is used for, which was adopted by Box Elder County in 2016. It is unconstitutional to take public funds from the people to pay for community development and economic development. We are a republic form of government and believe in the free market system. Our state and local government is participating in public-private partnerships, which is fascism, and is contrary to a republic form of government. All funding should cease from the community development and economic development, and the people's money restored to them. Planning and zoning should be handled by the Commissioners and not an unconstitutional, unelected, appointed board. Planning is for the required services such as sheriff, jail, and courts, that all citizens benefit from living in a safe environment. Zoning is only for immoral or dangerous properties that may hurt another property owner. The gas tax is supposed to be taking care of the roads, whether in the city or the county. Ambulance service is a double tax. All citizens pay into the service, but when you actually use the ambulance service, you receive a bill. Ambulance service should be a free-market service, then the cost will go down and the quality will go up. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty opposes the recent 55,000 purchase of an ambulance. It shouldn't, it should be a hospital expense, not a county expense. Again, free markets always do a better job in providing service than the government. The Municipal Service Fund was just another government program to take more money from the people, and we oppose this added government program. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person we'd like would be Dennis Patterson.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Dennis Patterson.
Morning.
Morning, Dennis.
Our hearts go out to all those affected of the recent tragic events. Hey, we really appreciate the County Commission's actions to support farms and ranches in Box Elder County with the APAs and with the new ag heritage zoning area. We feel that there could be improvements made to the process to rezone the ag heritage zone. And I'm referring to the comments that Commissioner Bingham made during the public comment period July 17th in the Planning Commission meeting. Oh, I think we need to disclose the anonymous donor who is paying one application fee for a group of rezoning applicants that are applying for AHCs. This would ensure, you know, there's no conflict of interest there. County officials should not allow rezoning of properties unless the Box Elder County standard zoning process is followed, in our opinion, including the standard fee schedule. This will help offset a lot of expenses that are incurred in that process, and I believe that's why we probably have that fee schedule set up in, in the fee schedule. Number three, the new AHC law permits the applicant to apply for ag zoning and for AHC zoning and allows pre-existing prohibited uses to become legal non-conforming uses. By retroactively making these uses legal, the AHC process usurps the past planning and zoning processes. It could benefit rogue person that went, that didn't comply with zoning. Finally, the County Commission must not upset the community plans where they exist. We have a lot of community plans in Box Elder, a general plan. They are part of the general plan and they're, as part of the framework for planning and zoning for Box Elder County. They require a lot of collaboration and public involvement to create and should be honored to protect the communities with zoning. Rezoning single parcels inside community plans without holistic, robust input from the entire community that lives there is a step backward and would erode the trust between county officials and county residents. Because those people live there, they should have a say rather than ad hoc zoning changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, that's the last individual that wanted to be involved in public comment. We will now move on to the warrant register, which is right here. Okay. I'm going to finish them in just a minute. Okay. We're not going to have a closed session, so we'll finish signing them. Any personnel actions, volunteer action forms, cell phone allowance? Okay, I will entertain final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is over.